I'd like to call the September 8th Common Council meeting to order. I'd like to first say I'll be lowering my mask to speak. I have sneeze guards on each side and am protected and six feet away from anybody forward so that you all can hear me. And we will begin, and I'd encourage anybody else that feels the same need, but we will begin with the pledge allegiance. Councilman Vincent.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Clerk Treasure.
Councilman Vincent.
Here.
Councilman Frankie.
Present.
Councilwoman Cutler.
Present.
Councilman Galloway. Councilwoman West.
Present.
Councilwoman Ficus.
Present.
Councilwoman Brown.
Present.
All present.
Approval of minutes. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Petitions and comments from the citizens, because we haven't had any paper to write down ahead of time, I would also like to say we've changed up somewhat that if you're here to discuss a specific topic or an ordinance, we will give you the opportunity to speak on that ordinance at the time it's being heard and discussed. So other than that, do I have, if you could raise your hand, any petitions and comments? I have one. If you'd come.
I'd like to clarify what you just said. So in words like.
So if you have a concern about a certain ordinance, we will give you an opportunity.
That you're going to be reading for the second.
Correct. We'll give you an opportunity. Perfect. And we'll have an opportunity before it's voted on to share your concerns. Any other comments at this time? Okay. Standing committee reports. We'll begin with Councilwoman Brown.
Yes, I attended the tree commission meeting last, or on August 20th, and there was a lot of inter. Homes with schools. And also they were talking about the tree inventory that was already done last year and kind of going into that. I also have the municipal authority meeting tomorrow at 5:15. And then September 17th, the tree commission's going to be meeting at 5:00 PM at City Hall.
Councilwoman Ficus.
Traffic commission met Tuesday, September 1st, then park board met on August 19th. The water feature is up and running at Unity Park. Proposed changes to the field usage fees were approved. This puts our fees more in line with surrounding fields. Approval was given for Beechwood to sell nine of their older carts and take that money to put towards four new carts. They will either buy the carts outright or lease new. The shoreline improvements are continuing at Kiwanis Teledyne Park. Six outdoor AED units were installed throughout our parks, thanks to a grant from the Healthcare Foundation of LaPorte. And then the park board will meet again on Wednesday, September 16th, 4:00 PM at the park office.
Councilman Vincent.
The BZA and Plan Commission is meeting here this evening. Among other things, they're going to be talking about some improvements to our assigned ordinance. And if those things are worked out here tonight or at their next meeting, we'll see that here at council shortly after. Their next meeting will be on October 13th, 6 o'clock here in the council chambers.
Councilman Galloway.
Police merit commission met this afternoon. Captain Behan retired. We have, I think we have a transfer from New Coralisle. It sounds good because they've already been through the, what, state police meeting? Meeting. Training down there. And the applicants, four of nine waiting on from, I didn't read either. Four of nine waiting to fill the spots. And the promotions are two corporals and a captain. And the veterans should be next Monday, 5 o'clock at the park board, or park department.
Councilwoman West.
The fire merit commission would like to report that everyone has moved into the new fire station and they will have a ribbon cutting on September 17th. No other news to report.
The redevelopment commission met on August 26th. It was a quick meeting. They got an update from city engineer Nick Minnick on Clear Lake Trail Boardwalk. All the pylons are in place and construction's moving along. Newport Landing is moving along as well. And the next meeting for redevelopment commission will be on the 30th at 5:15 here at City Hall. The school board next meeting will be Monday, so six days from today. Everything seems to be going well so far for them, and that's it.
Okay. We'll move on now to the second final reading of an ordinance amending 94-237 loading zones. Councilwoman Ficus.
Your honor, I move to read an ordinance for the second time by title only.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Councilwoman Ficus.
An ordinance amending section 94-237 loading zones of the municipal code of the city of LaPorte, Indiana.
So we have heard for the second final time this ordinance. Discussion?
I move to approve the ordinance.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Discussion? Anybody from the public? Hearing none. All in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Councilwoman West, second final reading of ordinance number 10-267, establishing condemnation of a dwelling or dwelling unit.
I make a motion to read this ordinance for the second and final.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion, or vote passes seven zero. Councilwoman West.
Ordinance.
Is that on the add-on?
That's, this will be on the addition.
The addition? Okay.
So discussion?
We got the corrected one, Roger.
Julie, would you like to give some additional information regarding this? I think I would like to just add, this is to clarify, to clarify that we're not going to be condemning homes from those individuals that are looking for help from the police and fire, but more focused on those that don't want to follow by our community rules.
I could go ahead.
So we are there. So do I have a motion to?
Can I ask a question?
Can we have a motion first to put this on with the addition?
I will make a motion to accept the ordinance as amended.
Have a motion.
Take it.
And a second. Discussion?
I would just like to know, like, if there is a case of domestic violence and there's repeat activity at that property due to domestic violence, is that going to condemn the property?
Right here, this is what will protect those individuals from being removed from the property.
Okay.
This is more focused where you see where we have a chronic nuisance property that has been labeled by code enforcement. Mr. Bachelor's here. And then we have, I think it's five more police calls over that time to those individuals that are causing issue, violent, aggressive behavior, that the police are having to be called on a consistent basis.
That would be over a six-month period.
Any other questions or discussion?
Make a motion to adopt.
That was over a six-month period?
Correct.
Make a motion to accept.
I do have one motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. Before we take a vote on this, we will open for discussion from the public, and I believe we have one individual that would like to speak on this. If you could state your name and address.
My name's Brad Ake, and my address is 332 Grayson Road, LaPorte. This ordinance that you're passing is a really remarkable change to the original ordinance, which was passed in 2014. Currently, what I understand is there maybe there's four or five places right now that are having problems of this magnitude of violence or drugs or whatever it is. So what we're asking to do is to condemn a building based on your, who you are, what you're doing. I'm at a loss for the word. Your activities, okay? And putting it on to the landlord. I've had one place, maybe four years ago, two years ago, and it had eight or nine police calls. Not once was the ordinance from 2014 ever established. No, never did I get notice from the code enforcement saying, following, following the rules. I mean, it's amazing. Notification by code enforcement, you know what I'm saying? I mean, they, and then sent by certified mail, and it's never been done. So establishing to change, to just to condemn this, a building, I mean, literally condemn it, right? You're saying you got to move out, right? And how are we going to do that with the court system right now? You can't evict anybody till the end of the year. And there's still cases from the year before, or, you know, since February, and it's just, we're unable to do it. So how are you guys going to get these people out?
Well, and I'll be glad to answer that. And Mr. Bachelor, code enforcement, we've already condemned properties with the police, and I'll have Sheriff Breton come up in a few minutes and speak about this. We are putting our officers in danger because we've got people and individuals that landlords are putting in the building and then ignore and don't get out and cause our community danger, damage to our reputation, and that's changing. So number one, what we're going to do, the property is condemned only until, like, if there was something physically wrong with that property and we condemned it till the property was fixed. This now property is condemned until those individuals leave. So.
So how do you get them out?
Well, Mr. Bachelor, do you want to, I guess, speak?
I have a couple more before I change, or I can come back up.
No, no, you're fine. He's here.
Oh, he's over here, okay.
He's here on code enforcement. Jeff, if you'd like to speak on behalf of the process and the success you had on condemnation.
Um, yes.
So if there's no code violations, how do you condemn a building if it's just activity violations?
Because we now are establishing this as a part of that.
Right. But we're doing it based on, we're condemning a place on activity.
Correct.
And if there's no wiring problems, no physical problems, we're saying just because you behave bad, I mean, I understand the domestic stuff is important not to be in there. And for me, it's like, I've never been notified. I've had a couple places where one guy had the cops called three times a month. And they never, I never got, this was never followed, this ordinance.
But I guess what, as a landlord, what is your concern?
I kicked the guy out. Eventually, when I found out about it, I kicked the guy out and I got him to get out.
Why wouldn't you want an individual that's doing nothing but causing problems, firing guns, knife fights, fist fights? Why wouldn't you want them out of your property?
I do want them out. I'm not stating that at all. I'm looking at it as a different perspective as, it doesn't say that in here, for violent guns, drugs. It doesn't specifically explain what it is.
Well, police response calls and.
Right. But I'm not getting, I don't get notified. If I have two calls at the same building in less than a week, I'm not being notified. It's not happening in my places. My places are very nice and clean, okay? I mean, I'm not, I'm not worried about this affecting me and my properties.
Can I say something real quick?
Sure. Mr. Bachelor, go ahead.
This is addressed in the chronic nuisance properties. This isn't for just every time that there's a violation or a police call to a house. The person already has to be labeled as a chronic nuisance property. So I mean, we're talking about a very small group of landlords in the city of LaPorte. It's not a big group of people. However, they do cause a lot of strain on the police department. That's what we're trying to address.
Yeah, I agree. I agree with that.
And you'd have to be labeled as a chronic nuisance property first.
Right. And I guess.
You have the COVID where they're saying you can't kick anybody out.
Right.
At the end of the year?
The federal CDC has only said you cannot be kicked out for non-payment. That's the only reason.
Okay.
All right.
Okay.
All right. And then other things, like, I mean, this is changing it quite a bit. It's changing it from 60 days and three, three calls in 60 days to five calls in 180 days.
After you become a chronic nuisance property. You have to be.
That's what that says here in the original, in the original ordinance.
Correct.
But it says three calls. That's after you become a chronic nuisance?
Correct. This will be five calls in a six-month period.
To become, to become a chronic nuisance, to get your house condemned, you got, it's six calls in, five calls in six months?
No. You first, your home would have to be labeled as a chronic nuisance property.
Okay. So you get the three calls in 60 days.
And then after that, it would be five calls in six months. Then you would be, the property would be condemned till those individuals are removed. And code enforcement and the police in combination have had pretty good success removing those individuals. And then you could immediately rent out that facility again.
Okay. And then, so if it's activity, if it's activity problems, the tenant that was there is still responsible for the fees that are incurred, whatever.
Till they're removed, you're saying.
Well, if it becomes chronic and you guys can't get them out or whatever because it's activity, but you're saying you can get it, and I, what, in a week, two weeks? The first day?
Well, depending on, Jeff.
How do you get them out?
Jeff, do you want to explain, and maybe we can have the police chief come along with how you remove those individuals and how you have removed those individuals?
Yeah, we just did one over on Michigan Boulevard or Michigan Street, and they were given 10 days. After the 10 days, we went up there, actually talked to them, told them they have to get out. I called the police. The police was there with us. And we actually ended up having adult protective services there too, so we could take the person. And it took about 45 minutes, talking to them and getting them. We got the person helped, and the house was vacated.
Yeah, so this is good. This is going to help.
Correct.
And I'm just worried about if it, to make sure we have as much in there to protect the people who are doing it right. Because when I read this, it's, I'm concerned that it's not, that, you know, it could be, there could be a possibility of being taken advantage of.
That's why we added Councilwoman West's language to make sure those that are looking for help and needing help.
Right.
Are protected.
Okay.
And we're dealing with those individuals that don't want to be in our community and follow the rules.
Right. Right. That's fine. I agree with that. I like following rules.
Because we've heard from landlords that say, hey, there's nothing I can do. I can't get them out. They're damaging the property. They're shooting guns. They're doing these other things, and we can't get them out. Now we're given an option to get them out.
And so, and then they'll be responsible for the fees, like it says in the original, in the original ordinance from 2014.
The fees from?
From activity nuisance. See, I'm responsible, the landlord's responsible for property fees if there's problems with the, with the being a nuisance because I'm not fixing things. And then the tenants are responsible for the activity fees right now in the 2014s.
Jeff, do you want to confirm that about the fees? Is that with the landlord or the tenant?
It's supposed to be both. I mean, if it's the person and they have problems and it's, we've addressed that, that, let's say apartment 102 is the problem child, that they're the, they're the activity person, then they get addressed too. But it's, but the landlord, if they have them still sitting in the place and not doing anything about them, then the landlord's a problem too.
Yeah, but we don't know. If you don't let us know, how do we, how do we?
But the thing is, Brad, here's, here's the thing that it boils down to. Before it gets labeled as a chronic nuisance property, you will be told.
Okay.
I will sit down, I will give you a letter to explain everything to you. I'm going to take and be more hands-on and more in people, I don't want to say in people's faces, but I want to be, make sure that, I don't want to have to do this. This is the last thing that I want to take and do. I would much rather be able to take and work with people so that we can get stuff accomplished rather than condemning properties or naming people chronic nuisance, people or chronic nuisance properties. You know, I'd much rather work with people so that we don't have to do that. But sometimes some people, it takes, takes that to happen.
But it's been ignored for long enough, and we're setting a new standard, and we hope that the landlords will meet that standard.
Well, yeah, I agree. I mean, as long as we can follow the original idea of the original ordinance, right? And I mean, I probably know before you it was a chronic place because I'm not getting paid. So, and then, but there's nothing I can do now till probably April of next year because of the way the court system's so backed up.
Unless you're getting police calls.
Right.
Any other questions?
No, that's great. Thank you.
Chief Breton, if you would, just wouldn't mind to thank you, Brad. Chief Breton, if you wouldn't mind just coming on, and we've had 13,000 calls in the first six months this year throughout the city of LaPorte. We have limited staff, and how much of your time and your officer's time are put in danger dealing with rental situations?
Well, I don't have exact numbers, but it's quite a bit, quite a bit. And we all know where the properties are. And this is going to help landlords. It really is. It's another tool. Jeff and I, I was out there with him personally on Michigan Avenue. It went well. And like I say, this isn't the past. You will know when you have a chronic nuisance. Jeff is very good at sending out those letters, so they're, they know.
Any questions for Chief Breton? Thank you. Any other discussion from council? Hearing none. I believe I do have a motion and a second. All those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Councilwoman Ficus, introduction of an ordinance amending section 94-322 of the municipal code.
Your honor, I move to introduce an ordinance read for the first time in its entirety.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor state by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Councilwoman Ficus.
An ordinance amending section 94-322 of the municipal code of the city of LaPorte, Indiana, placing a stop sign on Ohio Street at its intersection with Lawrence Street. Whereas, the traffic commission, after due consideration, has recommended to the common council that a stop sign be placed on Ohio Street, westbound traffic, at its intersection with Lawrence Street. Now therefore be it, and it is hereby ordained by the common council of the city of LaPorte, Indiana, that section one, that section 94-322 of the municipal code of the city of LaPorte is hereby amended to add a stop sign at the following intersection. Ohio Street, westbound traffic at its intersection with Lawrence Street. Section two, any ordinances in conflict shall be repealed. Section three, this ordinance shall be in full force and effective upon its passage, approval by the mayor, and publication as required by law. End of ordinance.
So we have an ordinance on its initial reading here. Is there any discussion? Or Councilwoman Ficus, you've kind of led the charge. Would you like to explain?
This, we actually had several people that came to traffic commission asking for some sort of stop sign on Lawrence. The actual stretch, I mean, Ohio Street, the actual stretch of Ohio Street intersects with like 15 streets, and there's only five stop signs on it. So speeding is an issue. I guess it's been on Facebook that people are trying to, you know, drag race each other. So we thought that right now the first natural stopping place to put a stop sign would be Ohio and Lawrence.
Yeah, it's my word, that's a good place to put it.
And if you've spent some time from Heilmann with all the kids there and the speeders that are going there, I know Chief Breton has put some officers on their cars out there, and I believe this is a good thing. Are there any other discussion on this? Hearing none, we'll bring that back for a second reading at the next meeting. Councilman Frankie, introduction of an ordinance amending the Human Rights Commission.
Your honor, I move to do the first reading of an ordinance amending section 58, article two of the Human Rights Commission.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Councilman, oh, all in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes seven zero. Councilman Frankie.
Whereas, the common council, after due consideration, wishes to amend section 58, article two of the city of LaPorte municipal code for the city of LaPorte, Indiana. Whereas, the Human Rights Commission shall be renamed the City of LaPorte Diversity and Inclusion Committee. Whereas, the Diversity and Inclusion Committee shall serve as a resource for city government and the community and provides information, education, and communication that facilitates a better understanding and celebrates our diversity, provides education regarding our city's overall diversity, and works with the city departments to assist with employee training and outreach events in the community. Now, therefore be it ordained by the common council of the city of LaPorte, that section 58, article two shall now be amended and revised as follows. Section 58-26, public policy and purpose. A, it is the public policy of the city of LaPorte, Indiana, to provide all of its citizens equal opportunity for education, employment, access to public conveniences and accommodations and acquisition through purchase or rental of real property, including but not limited to housing, and to eliminate segregation or separation based on race, color, religion, gender identity, sexual orientation, sex, including pregnancy, national origin, age, disability, genetic information, marital status, amnesty, or status as a covered veteran in accordance with. in accordance with applicable federal, state, and local laws since such segregation is an impediment to equal opportunity. Equal education and employment opportunities, and equal access to and use of public accommodations, and equal opportunity for acquisition of real property are hereby declared to be civil rights. B, the practice of denying these rights to persons because of race, color, religion, gender identity, sexual orientation, sex, including pregnancy, national origin, age, disability, genetic information, marital status, amnesty, or status as a covered veteran is contrary to the principles of freedom and equality of opportunity, and is a burden to the objectives of the public policy of the city of LaPorte, Indiana, and shall be considered as discriminatory practices. The promotion of equal opportunity without regard to race, color, religion, gender identity, sexual orientation, sex, including pregnancy, national origin, age, disability, genetic information, marital status, amnesty, or status as a covered veteran is the purpose of this article. C, it is also the, the public policy of the city of LaPorte, Indiana to protect employers, labor organizations, employment agencies, property owners, or designated agent, real estate brokers, and/or agency builders and lending institutions from unfounded charges of discrimination. D, it is hereby declared to be contrary to the public policy of the city of LaPorte, Indiana, and an unlawful practice for any person for profit to induce or attempt to induce any person to sell or rent any dwelling by representations regarding the entry into the neighborhood of a person or persons of a particular race, color, religion, gender identity, sexual orientation, sex, including pregnancy, national origin, age, disability, genetic information, marital status, amnesty, or status as a covered veteran. E, this article shall be construed broadly to effecate its purposes. Section 58-27, Definitions. As used in this article, unless the context clearly requires otherwise, the term "person" includes one or more individuals, partnerships, associations, organizations, corporations, labor organizations, cooperatives, legal representatives, trustees, and bankruptcy, trustees, reviewers, and other organized groups of persons. The term "committee" means the City of LaPorte Diversity and Inclusion Committee here and after created. Three, the term "committee attorney" shall mean the city attorney or such assistants of the city attorney as may be assigned to the committee, or such other attorney as may be engaged by the committee, or voluntarily lend his or her services to the committee. Four, the term "affirmative action" shall mean those acts which the committee deems necessary to assure compliance with the city human rights ordinance. Five, the term "employer" includes the city or any department thereof, and any person employing six or more employees within the city, except that the employer does not include any not-for-profit corporation or association organized exclusively for fraternal or religious purposes, nor any school, educational or charitable religious institutions owned or conducted by or affiliated with a church or religious institution, nor any exclusively social club, corporation, or association that is not organized for profit, and except that the term "employer" does not include any state agency as defined herein. Six, the term "employee" includes any person employed by another for wages or salary, provided, however, that it shall not include any individual employed by his parents, spouse, or child, or in domestic services of any person. Seven, the term "labor organization" includes any organization which exists for the purpose in whole or in part of collective bargaining or of dealing with employers concerning grievances, terms, or conditions of employment, or for other mutual aid or protection in relation to employment. Eight, the term "educational institution" includes all public and private schools and training centers except those affiliated with religious institutions which may give preference to members of their religious group in selecting their students, and except those within the definition of state agency. Nine, the term "employment agency" includes any person undertaking with or without compensation to procure, recruit, refer, or place employees except such as our agencies of the state of Indiana. Ten, the term "discriminatory practice" shall mean the exclusion of a person by an individual from equal opportunities because of race, color, religion, gender identity, sexual orientation, sex, including pregnancy, national origin, age, disability, genetic information, marital status, amnesty, or status as a covered veteran, or a system which excludes persons from equal opportunities because of race, color, religion, gender identity, sexual orientation, sex, including pregnancy, national origin, age, disability, genetic information, marital status, amnesty, or status as a covered veteran, or the promotion of racial segregation or separation in any manner, including but not limited to, the inducing of or the attempting to induce for profit any person to sell or rent any dwelling by representations regarding the entry or prospective entry in the neighborhood of a person or persons of a particular race, color, gender identity, sexual orientation, sex, including pregnancy, national origin, age, disability, genetic information, marital status, amnesty, or status as a covered veteran. Every discriminatory practice relating to the acquisition or sale of real estate, education, public accommodations, or unemployment shall be considered unlawful unless it is specifically exempted by this article. It shall also be considered a discriminatory practice to discharge, expel, or otherwise discriminate against any other person because he or she filed a complaint before this committee. Eleven, the term "public accommodation" means any establishment which offers its services or facilities or goods to the general public, except those owned and operated by state agencies. Twelve, the term "complainant" means any individual charging on his or her own behalf to have personally aggrieved by a discriminatory practice that a discriminatory practice was committed against a person other than him, herself, or a class of people in order to vindicate the public policy of the state of Indiana and the public policy of the city of LaPorte, Indiana, as defined in this article. Let's ask Mr. Kaminsky to note on twelve, complainant is misspelled.
Thank you.
Thirteen, the term "complaint" means any written grievance filed by complaint, complainant, also typo, with the committee. To be acceptable by the committee, a complaint shall be sufficiently complete so as to reflect properly the full name and address of the complainant, again, the name and address of the respondent against whom the complaint is made, the alleged discriminatory practice, and a statement of particulars thereof, the date or dates and places of the alleged discriminatory practice, if it is of a continuing nature, the dates between which said continuing acts of discrimination are alleged to have occurred, and a statement as to any other action, civil or criminal, instituted in any other form based upon the same grievance as is alleged in the complaint, together with a statement as to the status or disposition of such other action. The city of LaPorte will not impede complainant from filing a state within the statute of limitations as set forth by law. Fourteen, the term "respondent" means one or more persons against whom a complaint is filed under this chapter and whom the complainant alleges has committed or is committing a discriminatory practice. Fifteen, the term "sex," as it applies to segregation or separation in this article, shall apply to all types of employment, education, public accommodations, and housing, except those specifically exempted, and includes pregnancy. Provided, however, that, one, it shall not be a discriminatory practice to maintain separate restrooms or dressing rooms, and that, two, it shall not be an unlawful employment practice for an employer to hire and employ employees for an employment agency to classify or refer for employment any individual or for an employer, labor organization, or joint labor management committee controlling apprenticeship or other training or retraining programs to employ any individual in any such program on the basis of sex, those certain instances where sex is a bona fide occupational restriction reasonably necessary to the normal operation of that particular business or enterprise. Sixteen, the term "sexual orientation" means homosexuality, bisexuality, asexual, pansexual, demisexual, graysexual, or heterosexuality, whether such orientation is actual or perceived, and includes association with another individual of a particular sexual orientation. Seventeen, the term "gender identity" means cisgender, transgender, gender nonconforming, non-binary, and gender fluid, whether it's a person's actual or perceived gender-related attributes, self-image, appearance, expression, or behavior, whether or not such characteristics differ from those traditionally associated with the person's assigned sex at birth. Eighteen, the term "disabled" or "disability" means a physical or mental condition of a person which constitutes a substantial disability. In reference to employment under this chapter, disabled or disability also means the physical or mental condition of a person which constitutes a substantial disability unrelated to such person's ability to engage in a particular occupation. Nineteen, the term "veteran" means, one, a veteran of the armed forces of the United States, two, a member of the Indiana National Guard, or three, a member of a reserve component. Twenty, the term "state agency" means every office, officer, board, commission, department, division, bureau, committee, fund, agency, and without limitation by reason of enumeration herein, every other instrumentality of Indiana, every hospital, every penal institution, and every other institutional enterprise and activity of the state of Indiana, wherever located. The university is supported in whole or in part by state funds and the judicial department of the state of Indiana. State agency does not mean counties, county departments of public welfare, cities, towns, township, school, cities, schooltowns, schooltownships, school districts, or other municipal corporations, political subdivisions, or units of local government. Section 58-28, Committee Created, Membership, and Terms. A, there is hereby created a Diversity and Inclusion Committee that strives to be composed of five members representative of the racial, ethnic, religious, economic, and educational groups in the city of LaPorte. They shall be appointed by the mayor with the advice and consent of the city council within sixty days from the date of passage of this article. Of the five members first appointed, one shall be appointed for one year, two for two years, and two for three years. Thereafter, each appointment shall be for a term of three years. The city attorney, the director of human resources, and the director of code enforcement will serve as advisors to the five-member committee. B, if a member dies or resigns, his or her successor shall be appointed to serve the unexpired period of the term to which his or her predecessor has been appointed. The mayor may remove committee members for cause which is legitimate, justified reason related to legal misconduct, but for no other reason. C, the committee shall elect from its membership at its first meeting and thereafter at its April meeting annually a chairman, vice chairman, and secretary. The first meeting of the committee shall be held within thirty days after its appointment. The expenses for carrying on the committee's activities shall be paid out of the funds in the city treasury. D, a majority of appointed members shall be in attendance to constitute a quorum. Section 58-29, Powers and Duties. The committee shall, bless you. The committees shall have the following powers and duties. One, advise and instruct residents of their rights under state and federal law. Two, serve as a resource for city government and the community by providing information, education, training, and communication that facilitates a better understanding of our diversity, our rights, and our legal obligations to all persons in our city. Three, provide education regarding the city's overall diversity. Four, periodically work with the city departments to assist with events, training, and activities. Five, engage the community regarding diversity and inclusion, and solicit feedback and information to the city. Six, assist the city in supporting and working with all areas of government and the community to eliminate and prevent all forms of discrimination, hate, and bias. Seven, provide recommendations and information to the city council that identifies opportunities to address issues of diversity, promote diversity programs, and/or provide guidance to create a more equitable, accessible, safe, welcoming, and inclusive government and community. Eight, advise the city council on best practices for conducting outreach to the community. Nine, make recommendations to the city council on new events and activities that are appropriate and relevant for the community. And ten, provide recommendations to the city council on other matters within the committee's jurisdiction. Section 58-30, City Contracts, Contractors. Every contract to which the city or any of its political or civil subdivisions is a party, including franchises granted to public utilities, shall contain a provision requiring the contractor and his subcontractors not to discriminate against any employee or applicant for employment to be employed in the performance of such contract with respect to his or her higher tenure, terms, conditions, or privileges of employment, or any matter directly or indirectly related to employment because of his or her race, color, religion, gender identity, sexual orientation, sex, including pregnancy, national origin, age, disability, genetic information, marital status, amnesty, or status as a covered veteran. Breach of this covenant may be considered a material breach of the contract. The committee may issue affirmative action guidelines. Section 58-31, Programming. In order to eliminate prejudice among the various groups in the city and to further goodwill among such groups, the committee on its own or in partnership with the Indiana Civil Rights Commission and other entities will work to offer educational programs designed to emphasize and remedy the denial of equal opportunity because of a person's race, religion, color, sex, national origin, ancestry, sexual orientation, gender identity, or disability, its harmful effects, and its incompatibility with the principles of equality. The committee will discuss opportunities to participate in federal and state policy changes impacting the city of LaPorte. Section 58-33, Relationship with Civil Rights Commission. The legal department may enter into a working relationship with the Indiana Civil Rights Commission to perpetuate, sorry, getting a little stumble, the mutual objectives set forth in this chapter and the Indiana civil rights law. Section 1, any ordinance in conflict shall be repealed. Section 2, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage, approval by the mayor, and publication as required by law.
Councilman Frankie, impressive, we were quite impressed, we were able to hang in there and do that. So this has been read, we will open this up for discussion to the public and here amongst the council. One thing that I would recommend, if I could, is that on Section 58-28, number A, is that the mayor should not, this was, I mean, you're reading your language, but maybe that the mayor should not appoint all five members. The council should probably at least appoint two of them, might be something for you to consider.
I agree.
I agree.
And I like that, and-
Any other discussion? Councilman Galloway?
If, say you appoint two or three, whatever we do, and if you don't like whatever they're doing, if they're, if we have to get them off the committee, it should come to you or come to us, know what I mean? Understand what I'm saying? If, if we appoint them to there and they're whatever, whatever they're screwing up or something, then we should be able to, the evidence and-
To remove them?
Right. Thank you.
I think that's fair.
And by the way, it is the term, I think we did confirm, complainant is correct, or complainant, and so-
It's interchangeable, so.
Forgive me for questioning your legal expertise.
Councilman Galloway?
I have one more on the money. The expenses, can we give them a budget? I mean, you can't just say expenses, it could be twenty, thirty, forty thousand, we don't know, but you have veterans committee, you have several committees, they have certain budgets. Can we like, instead of just giving them, um, the expenses for carrying on committee activities shall be paid out of the funds in the city treasury. Can't we put a budget, you know, to where-
Put treasury partho.
Understand what I'm saying, we can't let it go too far because we're hurting for money now.
There's currently five thousand dollars in the council budget for Human Rights Commission, so we'll just pass that over to the city committee.
That's a good start, yeah, thank you.
I have a question.
Councilwoman Cutler?
In terms of the committee, some of us are appointed to committees as a voting member of the committee, and other times we're strictly a liaison to report back. Would we want a councilperson appointed as a voting member, or in addition to these five, have one councilperson who is a liaison?
I think that's up to the council, however you choose.
I think, I think a liaison isn't a bad idea, but a voting member would make it even-
I think, I think a liaison isn't a bad idea, but a voting member would make it even and-
I'd like to be on that.
Potentially cause conflict.
I think I like that idea, like-
But you are reducing an opportunity for someone from the public by one member if you have-
Right, so not a voting member, just a liaison.
Just a liaison, but not a voting member.
Yeah, that's good. I'd like to be on that if nobody objects. I'd like to, of course, if you'd rather have that.
Hold on, Councilman Galloway, hold on.
Wait a minute.
Hold on. Any other discussion regarding this before I take comments from the public? Anybody from the public would like to speak on this ordinance, first reading? Raise your hand or come up to the mic. State your name, address, and if you want, you can pull your mask off since you are away.
Excellent, thank you. My name is Alyssa Affeld. I live at three oh three Planet Street in LaPorte. I just wanted to address the council. I know that Councilman Frankie and Nick Otis poured a lot of heart and soul into revamping this ordinance, and I just wanted to solidify that we were in support of this ordinance and that we believe that a diversity and inclusion committee is probably a better use of the city funds. When we approached the council before, there was a bit of chaos that ensued, but I would say that I think that the city has done, made incredible measures to accommodate the things that we had asked for in including this amendment to this ordinance.
Great. Are there any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilman Frankie, you read quite a bit. Would you like to give a simple version of what this, what this does and what the purpose is?
Sure, I'll give a quick summary of those two hundred thousand words. Basically, the Human Rights Commission through the old ordinance hasn't been operating for quite some time, and really, the city doesn't have the resources such as a judge in-house to try cases, and so it didn't really make sense based on the scope of our abilities within the city government to do things that way. So we worked with, with members of the public who gave their input and just basically redid this to be something that could-
Could be a working structure, will be a working structure, and be, you know, actually used and effective in helping promote diversity and inclusion of the city.
Any other questions? Harry Young will bring us back for a second read of the next committee. Councilwoman Brown, introduction of an ordinance, amended ordinance eighteen dash twenty nineteen of the city of LaPorte.
Your honor, I move to introduce the ordinance read for the-
First time in its entirety.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Councilwoman Brown.
An ordinance amending ordinance eighteen, twenty nineteen of the city of LaPorte, Indiana to establish salary for a new position in the wastewater stormwater department. Be it, and it is hereby ordained by the common council of the city of LaPorte, Indiana, that section one, ordinance number eighteen, twenty nineteen of the city of LaPorte, Indiana, adopted by the common council on October twenty-first, twenty nineteen, is hearing the following position: wastewater stormwater department, project manager, forty-five thousand. Section two, in all other regards, ordinance eighteen, twenty nineteen shall be unchanged. Section three, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its passage and approval by the mayor and publication by, as required by law. End of ordinance.
So we do have this introduction of an ordinance. Are there any questions? We do have Jerry Jackson here that can explain, if could take a moment and tell you a little bit more about this position.
When the stormwater utility was formed two years ago, the plan was always to have someone to kind of guide the program and, and be a technical asset to the program. The, we got a little slower start on the stormwater program than we wanted, but we're ramping up here, getting ready to have a bond issued, do some big projects, so it seems like the right time. This person would, I'm hoping to get a good technical person, have some potentials, would eventually be the person who's designing stormwater projects, sewer separation projects, under the guidance of the city engineer. They would, I kind of hope they would be the, the person who's in the back room designing these projects and, and be the, the technical person who evaluates stormwater projects at new developments, subdivisions, that sort of thing. So they would kind of have a wide range of, of duties, but it would all be in regard to infrastructure and primarily stormwater. They may do some, some backup for the engineering department when they get overloaded. They, they definitely, the engineering department hurts for personnel to get things done, and we've had that discussion. There's some kind of, there's a little bit of overlap there. Any questions?
Any questions?
Do you have a start date in mind for this position?
We haven't got any, if, if we find the right people, could be pretty soon. Person could be pretty soon.
And I think, I'll say that we're in desperate need for the technical part of fresh blood, not that we're an aging department, but we need to begin looking at the future.
Absolutely. My department is an aging department. I won't, won't tell you anything otherwise. We, we're, I'm, I'm in my mid-fifties, and the majority of the people in my department are that, and we need, we need technical people who are, can lead the department for a long term.
Any other questions? Thank you, Jerry. We will move this on.
One other question.
Councilwoman Cutler?
Would there be any reason to suspend the rules and approve this earlier, or no?
Okay, thank you. No other questions?
I was with you on that, but I don't think we can really go on.
Thank, just thought I'd check.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Cutler, introduction of a resolution approving use of enterprise zone investment.
Your honor, I move to introduce resolution read for the first and only time in its entirety.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes seven zero. Councilwoman Cutler.
A resolution approving use of enterprise zone investment deduction credits within a tax increment financing district. Whereas James E. Magnuson Trust, herein Magnuson Trust, has requested of the common council of the city of LaPorte approval to use enterprise zone real property investment deduction credits within a tax increment financed district, specifically the central business district allocation area number one at the address one twenty-five East Shore Court, LaPorte, Indiana, four six three five oh. And whereas Magnuson Trust's capital investment of one million dollars for new five thousand four hundred and seventy square foot professional office building number one is expected to employ approximately twenty construction workers and house approximately twenty employees upon completion of the construction with occupancy beginning on or around November twenty twenty. And whereas the city planner for the city of LaPorte has provided an analysis showing that use of the investment deduction credits would not adversely affect any TIF obligation in the TIF district. Now therefore be resolved by the common council of the city of LaPorte as follows: that Magnuson Trust requests to use enterprise zone investment deduction credits within the central business district allocation area number one. Said credits shall be for a period of ten years, and Magnuson Trust agrees to a fee of thirty-five percent of its investment deduction credit savings paid to the LaPorte Urban Enterprise Zone each year for a period of ten years to maintain eligibility in the program. End of resolution.
So I have a motion and a second discussion. Before we begin council discussion, I'd like to ask Bert Cook to speak on this. Mr. Cook?
Thank you, mayor. Good evening to the council. Bert Cook, executive director of the LaPorte Economic Advancement Partnership. So we've done a number of these together, and so I won't go through all the details here. One thing I would note, Councilwoman Cutler, when you, when, when she read this, I believe she's reading off of a, maybe a dated resolution. The actual name of the, the company is Infinite Development LLC. That's the only change in the resolution, and it's also-